State, uh, relationship applicant would be prudent for me to abstain on this item. Um, so I'm gonna turn this item o- over to, um, Vice Chairman Porter.
This is a public hearing on a conditional use permit and site plan to allow for the construction of an automated car wash, storage building, and a multi-tenant commercial building. Um, we have a staff report on that?
Yes, Vice Chair, Planning Commissioners, agenda item number one, PLN 16-025, again is a conditional use permit in a site plan to allow for the construction of an automated car wash, storage building, and a multi-tenant commercial building, as well as a conditional use permit to allow for a deviation of Title 16 signage standards on four vacant parcels, zone, community, commercial, within the Civic Center specific plan. And it's located at the northeast corner of McCart Road and Palmdale Road, just adjacent to our city yard. As you can see, this is our first development within the Civic Center specific plan, and staff is very pleased to bring this item to you. And as well as you can see from the cover memo, there will be a parking request from the applicant. Staff does wanna note that the Planning Commission is encouraged, but not required to give Civic Center parking incentives based on each individual project. Other than that, staff recommends approval as condition.
Thank you. I'll call this public hearing to order and ask if anyone wishes to speak, that they fill out a white card from the front of the, um, and the lobby.
Or here.
Or here. Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't need to.
You don't have to. Then I'm gonna call on you first.
Commissioners and staff, I'm David Chacon, I'm the project manager for the design team for the applicant, Team Speed Wash. I think many of you know the, um, the owner's operations, there's one in Victorville and one in Hesperia. Um, we do have a, um, a brief slideshow. Uh, we've went to, uh, we've worked through staff, with staff, to some extent, to try to, um, understand and utilize your newly adopted specific plan. Um, as we are, um, converging on, um, proposing this project, we found that, um, we wanted to utilize some of the parking incentives that are available, um, through the specific plan. And, um, that's what we'd like to have a discussion with you today. Uh, staff is asking, uh, for two conditions that we would like, um, to discuss and possibly change. And as we go through the slideshow, um, I'll, I'll bring up those points individually. You can go to the next slideshow. So, uh, Team Speed Wash is a long-term business owner and active partner in the communities of Victorville and Hesperia. Uh, there're, many of their staff live, uh, in the high desert area, and they currently employ about thirty-five existing, uh, employees. Uh, with the onset of this proposed project, we can expect an additional twelve employees to be added to their, uh, staff between the Victorville location and locations and Hesperia. Um, the demographics of, of the staff range in, in ages, but what we've found out and taken a, a brief poll, is that about fifty-eight percent of them actually, um, drive their own cars to work, and the balance use public transportation, rideshare, bicycle, or other means. Next slide, please. So, this is our site plan, which is in, in your package, and the, and the two items that we're looking to discuss with you today, um, are, uh, the ten uncovered flex spaces, as we're calling them, that are flanked along the car wash building. These spaces are currently proposed as flexible spaces in the sense that they would, um, have vacuum equipment located in those, uh, spaces. They're uncovered, and we're actually proposing that not only these spaces, but even our covered vacuum spaces would be open for anybody who is visiting the site, whether they're retail or car wash, to use while they were there. We see much of this practice today in his, in the Hesperia site, where someone will come and wash their car, do a vacuum job to their own car, and then walk over to either Panda Express or one of the other food, um, retail locations that are just onsite, and leave their car parked there for the time that they're at the other establishment. The second point that we wanna discuss is the allowance of a food use. Now, the, the intended food use that we're proposing is something that's similar to the fare of maybe a Subway, um, a small, something that has a small program, really not a, a bunch of, um, sit-in dining type of, um, uh, establishment, but maybe a coffee shop, um, Subway, yogurt shop, something of that, uh, nature. But out of the multi-tenant square foot area, we're looking to propose and ask that we would be allowed to use fifteen hundred square feet of the, uh, square footage towards a food use of some sort. Next slide, please. This, um, is our, uh, is our site plan, and, and what I did is I broke down the, the site plan, uh, essentially by, uh, the amount of spaces and the type of spaces that we're using, and I put it side-by-side comparison to the, um, staff's parking analysis. So that analysis is in the upper, uh, left-hand corner. The parking, um, count, if you will, is, um, in the middle of the, of the page to the top, and how, how it reads is, um, there are three ADA spaces, and those are, uh, indicated with the blue, uh, dot on your site plan. There are four electrical vehicle spaces, those have the, um, little black squiggly line, uh, indicated in their spot, one of those of which is shared. There are nineteen spaces, nineteen standard spaces, eighteen covered vacuum spaces, and eight flexible spaces. Again, those flexible spaces would have vacuum equipment, uh, located in their stalls, and two loading spaces. The loading spaces are indicated in, in yellow, there's one towards the storage building, and then there's one just near the, uh, the office portion of the car wash building, towards the center of the page. The total of all these spaces is equal to fifty-three, uh, parking stalls. The total parking required per staff summary is forty-four spaces. So we have an overage of spaces here. And that's without actually, um, utilizing any of the parking incentives that are available to us through the specific plan. When we use staff's recommended, um, incentives that they've tallied for us in your, uh, staff report, the required spaces, total adjusted required spaces, uh, comes up to thirty-four spaces. So we actually have a surplus of space, uh, car spaces, uh, here, but the, uh, concern was the balance of the site. As you can see, um, we're actually one, one complete site, but we're a little heavier parked on the, on the car wash side. The applicant would like to propose that we're able to use all the parking spaces to contribute to the, uh, required parking, and in such that if we are able to do that, if we added the fifteen hundred square feet of, uh, food use, our total parking required without any incentives would total fifty-two spaces, and that's at, um, that third table, if you will, to the left, kinda middle of the page. Sorry, I don't have a, a pointer with me. Um, so that's the gist of, of what we're, um, requesting, and it's really, the two requests revolve around, uh, parking in a shared scenario. The next slide, please. So, what I did, uh, with this slide is I wanted to, um, summarize and, and bring forward some of the incentives and objectives that are listed in the, uh, specific plan that was adopted. Um, this may be a little bit hard to read, but I'm, I'm guessing that you, you all had a bunch of, uh, time and influence into the, um, creation of that document, and eventually getting, helping getting it adopted. Uh, the objective five point seven is really, um, says that providing parking flexibility that allows shared parking facilities, off-site parking, and reduced parking is an objective of the actual specific plan. We believe that our project is, um, a project that is, is looking to do that by having a, um, dual-purpose or mixed-use, uh, type of layout where you can come and get your car wash, walk over, get a sandwich, or visit your insurance broker, whoever that mix of tenants may be. Um, as part of the incentive package that's in the specific plan, uh, we're required to have some sustainable goals, and the goals that, that we're proposing for this project are to meet the Calgary Tier One, um, to participate in the Southern California Edison saving by design, and this is really, um, a program through Edison that requires, uh, operators of, of this type of use to, um, have a higher, uh, standard than the state standard for operating electrical, um, motors and, uh, lights and that type of thing. And, uh, we've had some success in our Santa Ana project in achieving that level, and we're looking to do the same thing here. Uh, makes for good sense for, um, the environment, and makes for great sense for, for the owner and, and just a more efficient operation. Um, onsite, the car washes, um, you know, knowing that we're, we're now out of our drought, but the car washes are designed to actually recycle water to the, uh, tune of about eighty percent of reuse of water through a RO system that's onsite. And finally, um, we are looking to install a solar system over the vacuum canopy to help augment the electrical demand onsite. So those are some of the, some of the goals and, and proposed sustainable items that we're looking to achieve with the project. In exchange for that, we wanted to participate in the specific plan incentives. Now, in the, in the staff report that you received, we didn't, um, actually use all the incentives that are allowed through the document, through the specific plan. There are a few that are, that are still out there, we have not selected an Area Two, um, incentive, which, uh, of which, um, some, some of those incentives could be a additional reduction of two more parking spaces, or the use of off-street or, or street parking, off-site parking or street parking, um, or somewhere else i- in the other areas, but those would be some of the ones that we see that would fit with this project. Um, the image that's in the, in the lower left-hand corner, that's the, the off-street parking that's along McCart right now currently. Um, there is some markings for parallel parking, and there is no prohibitive signage, uh, prohibiting parking at this point. Next slide, slide, please. So, we, we've talked briefly about the shared parking. Um, our, our rationale is that, you know, uh, if you, if you come to use a car wash or the retail, you can park anywhere onsite, it, uh, would be allowed and, uh, encourage the, um, the ULI, when we're talking about shared parking, they look at peak demands when, when they're talking about, you know, is a site a candidate for shared parking? Uh, would it comply? Would it, would it make sense? And, and how they use that rationale is, if you have a food use or a retail use, there's certain demands during the week and certain time periods that those demands, uh, would require the maximum, uh, parking, and usually that maximum parking is exactly what your city code requires for that use, and that's what we've derived over the years. Um, the other uses are individually analyzed for their demands, and so, for example, if you have a car wash during the winter months, if it's raining like it's been doing the last few weeks, then essentially those spaces aren't being used, and there's, there's a surplus of spaces. So each one of these uses, depending on the time of year, time of day, and, uh, where, where it is in the week, we would see either a surplus or, or a high demand of parking. So, with this, we know that the specific plan talks about, um, looking at some shared scenarios, giving incentives to do so. Uh, we believe that we have the parking spaces to do a shared, um, parking scenario, and we would like to ask for, uh, your consideration to allow for us to use the ten spaces that are along the car wash building, uh, to count towards our, uh, total parking count so that we can, uh, have a food use, fifteen hundred square feet food use in the multi-tenants area. Um, this is also, I believe, part and parcel with the viability of this project. The mix, the right mix of tenants are gonna help to make this whole center viable, and that's gonna help the Palmdale corridor to remain viable, or even increase the viability of it. Um, the other, the other piece is, and I, and I'll just mention it, we are being conditioned to underground the electrical lines along Palmdale and McCart. That comes to a tune of about a million dollars is the estimate right now. In order to help subsidize that, this project is gonna have to be highly successful. Um, you know, that's not a small figure whatsoever, the applicants are committed to doing so, they're looking for your help, and, uh, for us to roll up our sleeves and figure out a way that we can get the right tenant mix in here in order for it to be successful, and they can, um, move forward with this project. So unless you have any other, um, questions, I think, um, that'll conclude what I wanted to convey.
I, I have a question. If you had a convenience store in there, you would qualify, it would further qualify you, rather than having any kind of sit-down, uh, restaurant, or mini-restaurant with, with very few chairs, but that, that way the, the stalls wouldn't be occupied for very long. It would be an in-and-out situation, and you could relieve a lot of that congestion when, during high-peak periods. Is that something you've considered?
We, we would consider, uh, something like that, and, in fact, the food use that, that we have in mind and that we're proposing would be something that would be more of a quick turnover, instead of a, um, maybe a long sit-down such as a Denny's or something like that. We're, we're thinking the opposite, small, quick, maybe sandwich shop, you run in, you get your sandwich, and then you're on your way. If you're there to do another errand, such as wash your car, or if there's a UPS type of store in there, that you can do a, a kind of a two-for-one stop, and utilize, uh, the site instead of having to, to come in and have a one-stop use, drive across the street, do your next errand, and, and that type of thing. So that's really our, our goal, and we think that that mix would help with the viability of the whole center.
Any questions?
Question, on your vacuum stalls, would there be some type of sign that would create public parking, or excess parking, or something that, uh, 'cause I wouldn't pull into a vacuum stall and, and leave, uh, vacuum, so unless...
Sure, we, and we had two ideas with that. We're, we're not opposed to striping, um, something on, on the ground that says that it's available for, um, any type of use, you know, or whether using it for the car wash or for the retail. The other item that we have available that, um, to us is the use of the audio message that we use now in Hesperia and Victorville, and that audio message, every ten, fifteen minutes can come in and, and give a message saying that you're able to utilize the parking space for the retail parking, some, something nice that's, that suggests, hey, go ahead and leave your car there, you don't have to leave right away, and you can walk across and get a ice cream or whatever it is.
First, I'd like to ask the staff a question. Um, how difficult was it to, of you, find this, uh, private? How difficult was it to, of you, on this project?
Not difficult at all. Besides this, this single parking issue, it's a great project. The design, circulation, a couple of issues there, but really it comes down to this, the single parking issue. Otherwise, it's an excellent project.
Some of the staff want to talk about a convenience store versus a mini-restaurant because that would decrease the number of parking spaces that he would need. Not very much, but a little bit.
Well, the, the convenience store would be parked by code at the 1 per 200, whereas a food use, even a fast food use, quick food use would be the, the 1 per 100 ratio. So you would have that doubling of the parking requirement. That's probably the difference of the two uses.
Now, I would just say that, a good presentation, very nice, very well done with the slides and everything. I just think maybe he, he might have been a little bit too liberal in talking about the incentives, the parking incentives. Obviously, you're not going to just keep doing parking incentives until you only have 10 spaces for, for a use that... So that's where the commission and staff has to look at it and say, try and figure out what's reasonable in terms of the incentives and, and how many parking spaces credits you get. And that's what Mike tried to do in the staff report. That's why he conditioned the project the way he did. It's absolutely right, and it's absolutely his right to come and request more, and that's what he's doing. But it would caution you a little bit. And then the shared parking discussion, I think in terms of planning lingo, it's typically, you're talking shared parking more of along the lines of two uses that are a little bit offset in times, like residential and commercial, mixed use as mentioned. Not necessarily two commercial uses that are going to have the same hours and the same peak impact times. So that, so that's just something to keep in mind, too. Some of the discussion of shared parking in the specific plan is dealing with, you know, uses that might occur at different hours. You know, one's more of a night use versus a day use, and they can share their parking facilities because they're not impacting each other at the same time. So that's some of the rationale behind the, behind the shared parking discussion, the specific plan. Just two points.
Yes, and I do agree with Chris, just being pragmatic and looking at the specific plan, with some of the additional incentives the applicant was talking about, they would be allowed two additional parking credits for the Area Two credits, as mentioned. They wouldn't be allowed any parking credits for the off-street parking, that's just for the CBC district, and they wouldn't be allowed any parking credits for the, for the shared parking concept, as Chris mentioned. That's for when you have two, two separate parcels that, you know, shared facility, not with this concept here. But I think that, that big issue would be the, the hybrid issue, the hybrid parking. I think we should focus on that for the discussion. It's my opinion.
And if I, if I can interject, certainly the incentives would, would help, but even without the incentives, if we added the 1,500 square feet of food use and we were able to use, utilize all the parking spaces that are on-site to make up our required parking, then we would be parked even without the incentives. And so that number again is 52 required parking spaces with the food use. We are parked at 53 spaces.
Could I ask you this? In your facility in Hisperia, what, on your highest peak, how much do you back up where you can't, you don't have enough parking for them to get to the vacuums and things like that?
It's, it's really a, a quick turnover, and so what happens if all the stalls are, are full when you come out of the car wash? By the time you circle around once, there's usually somebody pulling out. That exercise of vacuuming is usually about five to 10 minutes. There's some people that go into great, great detail, and they're there a little bit longer, you know, that 20 to 30-minute person that's really taking care of their car, or they've, you know, had a little more deeper cleaning to do. But it's usually circulating around and finding another spot. And that's another reason why we would like to see the flexible spaces remain along the car wash because that helps some of that congestion internally in the site, and it just gives people a little more option. And some people can make a left-hand turn a lot easier than a right-hand turn, and it gives that flexibility.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions?
If I might, so you represent Speed Wash, right? You, you're gonna, you're the, the owner of the Speed Wash.
I, I'm the project manager. I have the owners here, and we actually have the, the manager of the Victorville and Hisperia location here, if you want to ask some operational questions.
Just, just wondering, just that there's, there's no concern on their part that the customer doesn't come out of the car wash and find the bays empty, or bays full with other people and get frustrated with the business, with the, with the operation?
No, we want you to come up to the microphone.
Yeah, we need to hear your voice on the microphone.
Hi, I'm Ron Akers. Nice to meet you, thank you. What we've typically found, because they are free vacuum service, it's, it's, it's an optional deal. So some people like to do it sometimes, not do it others. So if they circle around, don't find a spot, they end up, well, I'll go ahead and do it next time. Most of our business are members, we have a ton of members, and so if they don't get to it one day, maybe four, maybe five days later when they come in, they actually find themselves, oh, I'll have a spot, I'll go ahead and vacuum. And, and the whole deal with, you know, with the lot size and bringing in, like David was saying, trying to bring the retail element in there is, one, you know, obviously it does help offset some of this construction with the underground and all, but it also gives the person an element, which we, which we're finding in Hisperia, where they do leave their car and they would take the Habit Burger, or the Pology, or even the Panda Express that's nearby. So, and, and that's not something that we have a problem with. We've tried to keep it kind of warm and open, and the customers don't seem to have a problem with that. Like I said, they may be able to vacuum one time, which is typically not an issue, but if it were, they'll, they'll catch it on the next time. We haven't had any negative feedback on that whatsoever. So I don't know if that, I hope that answered that somewhat.
That, that is the gist of it, yes. Are you worried about losing customers because they can't find a vacuum stall?
Not at all. It's not one of those, they have to pay for it, so they do feel comfortable, and a lot of them, like I said, they're regulars. They know the routine between Victorville and Hisperia, so it's an offering. It's not something set in stone, we just offer it. But there again, wanting to bring the retail element in it to help offset some of the, and add a service to those people as well. I hope that answered it. Thank you.
And one more item that I wanted to add, we have our, our traffic engineer here who actually performed a shared parking study for our site in Santa Ana, which had the same mix of uses. So we have a, a small retail, small food use, car wash, full-service car wash, and then we actually had one more use, and that was a two-story office building. I have a copy of, of that report here. They performed it. There's a couple other terms that she reminded me of and that I can bring her up and maybe if you have any further questions. But there is some internal capture of demand, if you will, for those parking spaces that happens when somebody actually is using the car wash and they, and they actually walk over to the other, the other type of use. And so all the demand that you would have in just a standalone site is actually get that kind of two-for, which, which is logical, two-for-one type of stop. So if you have any questions of Teresa, she's here, she's all, she also spearheaded the traffic study that has been submitted to Caltrans for their review as well.
I'd like to hear her testimony.
Okay.
For the record, my name is Teresa Allen. I'm a Senior Transportation Engineer with Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan Engineers. We've been engaged previously to work on the Santa Ana South Coast Speed Wash along with this project. Although the focus of our study effort for this particular engagement was that, on the traffic side of things, we did do a fairly detailed shared parking analysis of the very similar South Coast Santa Ana Speed Wash. And when we put together a shared parking analysis, it actually takes it a step further from straightforward application of city code parking ratios. And we, and that additional step is a well-documented methodology in the Urban Land Institute's publication, Shared Parking. A lot of different jurisdictions allow us to apply that kind of methodology in really looking at a mixed-use setting. So that's pretty much the premise, that it is something, it is a methodology that basically assumes that one parking space can be shared amongst different uses during different hours of the day if there are a variety of different land use types within a footprint that would, could feasibly share the same parking supply. So it would be very applicable to this site in terms of that the car wash facility is just right there in close proximity to the multi-tenant, multi-tenant building. And so one of the things that I reminded David about, just, he covered, he covered the shared parking notion quite well, but one of the characteristics within the methodology is something that we consider as internal capture. It's actually an, an adjustment, a further reduction that gets applied to account for the overlap in terms of usage, which means that the customers, of the potential customers of the Speed Wash, could potentially be the same customers who have already parked and would just simply walk over and be the same customers that's generated by the, the retail or food service component of the overall site. And so what that means is that there is no incremental parking demand. So it's not a mutually exclusive, one parking demand for the car wash gets added, you know, with the, the food service demand being added on top as an incremental 100, at 100%. So the application of that internal capture adjustment factor allows us to, to account for a more realistic, and I think that's it. It's, what shared, the shared parking methodology allows us is to take a more realistic in the actual operational setting of a mixed-use project. And so the, the range pretty much of, of internal capture percentages, I mean, you would be surprised. I mean, there are, there have been studies that actually go all the way up to even 50% of an internal reduction, internal capture reduction. And those are the ones that are, you know, for, for shopping centers with a big entertainment, big entertainment kind of setting, component, where one could really say that, you know, it's a family having dinner first before they go to see a movie and, and that kind of a thing. So, so in any case, I have seen studies account for as much as 50%, but we were quite conservative in the Santa Ana project that got approved by, by that city. We were very conservative in assuming an internal capture percentage of 10%. And I just wanted to remind, I guess, the, the commissioners that it looks like that the calculations even, that, that have been presented by, by David do not account for any kind of an internal capture reduction. So the, the straightforward comparison of, of demand against supply is, is as you see, results in either a complete offset, it matches, you know, it pretty much matches the, the requirement, or it actually could result, depending on, you know, what kind of shared parking components are accounted for, it, it could result in an actual potential operational surplus.
Thank you very much, Ann. Thank you, manager.
Is there any comments by the commissioners or staff?
Just one more comment. If the commission did decide to approve this flex parking idea and allow required parking stalls to be in the vacuum stalls as well, just wanted to remind the commission that this is a conditional use permit as well, and we can add some language to some of these conditions requiring, if there is a parking issue, for this to come back to the commission. Additionally, we do want to note that if there is a parking problem, we'll just, as Scott just pointed out, it'll probably force parking onto, on-street parking on McCart.
Oh, may I ask you a question? So we have continuous? Adding different language or...
No, I, I could add language here at this meeting.
So what is your pleasure?
Well, I got comments. I, I'm pretty stuck on parking. I've been on the commission a lot of years, and I've seen, everybody comes in and wants less parking, going for 24 years that I've been on. But this project, to me, ain't their first dog and pony show. They've done more of them, and to me, the owner feels confident that this will work. So I feel that maybe the, the vacuum area and this, we can make this work for them.
Let me close. Does anybody else wish to speak to this issue? Then I'll close the public hearing.
The staff, or should I make the motions first and then staff can come back with some additions on parking or...
Okay, I can, beforehand, I can state the conditions.
Right.
On condition number five of Resolution P-17002 for the conditional use permit, the language added, should a parking issue arise due to a use or any change of intensification, and the rest of the condition will remain. Additionally, I would propose to add a condition with that same resolution that the flex parking stalls shall be signed, striped, and installed with, with audio equipment for instructions, for parking instructions. And on the site plan resolution, I would recommend the elimination of condition number nine, which requires removal of those vacuum stalls. That condition would be eliminated. And condition number three could remain as stated because the commission would be approving the idea of these flex parking stalls.
The applicant agree on those conditions by staff?
I think its motion is to approve it with the 1,500 square feet of food.
Yes, I, I would ask that we would add language to include the 1,500 square, square foot. That would be my only interjection there.
Yeah, sounds good. So, issue number three.
I'm going to find the project category exempt under sequel, section 1533-2 entitled in Field Development Projects, adopt resolution number P-17-001 approving the site plan portion of case number PLN-16-0025 subject to the attached conditions of approval. of case number PLN 16-0025 subject to the attached conditions of approval, and adopt resolution number P 17002 approving the conditional use permit portion of case number PLN 16-0025 subject to the attached conditions of approval, adopt resolution number P 17-003 approving the conditional use permit portion of case number PLN 16-0025 subject to the attached conditions of approval, and also the added conditions that staff read to you on record.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dew, I mean, a motion by, first by Commissioner Huber, a second by Commissioner Dew approving the project with changes to the site plan resolution P 170001 by removing condition number nine and keeping condition number three in the site plan resolution, and a change to condition number five of P 170002, which is the conditional use permit, by revising the flex spaces and the audio equipment for instructions to the people who park, the customers, and additional language regarding the 1,500 square-foot food service use to be added to the CUP. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved with revisions to the conditions of both of those resolutions.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number two.
Thank you Chair Kirth and fellow commissioners. Item number two is case PLN 16-22. It is a general plan amendment and zone change to reclassify property from C2 general commercial to M2 heavy industrial for the anticipated development of a warehouse with a negative declaration. This is located at the southeast corner of Hisperia Road and Nisqually Road. The site is a 13.5 acre currently zoned commercial property. The applicant's requesting it to be changed to heavy industrial, potentially to house a industrial warehouse similar to what you see in the Foxborough Industrial Park. The applicant has provided a conceptual site plan, which is on page 143 of your agenda. The, the conceptual site plan is just that, it's a concept. They will have to come back if this zone change goes through. You'd have to, the planning commission would have to grant a site plan that would go over more detailed description of, of the project and use. But as you can see here, though, it, it houses a 2,600 square-foot facility. There is some grade changes, so potentially you would have a grade change from Hisperia Road down to that first row of parking, but that actually would help, help with the continuity of the building heights that are currently along Hisperia Road. You mainly have about one-story buildings, about 25 feet in height, and usually these warehouse buildings, you know, could range, you know, 15 feet higher than that. So the grade change would help with the continuity. Also, this is the entrance to the Foxborough Industrial Park, and most of the truck traffic would be coming off of Nisqually. So we don't see a lot of impact there with access with, along Hisperia, which is mainly commercial at this point. It is a signalized intersection. Staff initially had some concerns about changing a signalized intersection to industrial, but we do, we do see that Nisqually doesn't punch through. It's not a thoroughfare once you get past Hisperia Road. So, and also it is the entrance to Foxborough Industrial Park. So, we're neutral on this. You know, the highest and best use is somewhat questionable here, since you do see commercial along Hisperia building out to, right now, but you also see the Foxborough industrial expanding as well. So we, we need your feedback on this. But the project went through a full environmental review, and it's presented to you for the, the land use, which would be a recommendation to city council if you see fit, and we're available if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff? Then I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Do you have anything to report or any questions for us? Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak on agenda item number two? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a decision.
I would like the petitioner to...
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I'm going to reopen the, the public hearing, and sir, would you be able to come forward? I guess there's a question for you.
Thank you for petition, the City of Victorville, for your project. I have to ask you this question first of all, do you have the staff report, like what I'm holding?
I do, yeah.
You do? Well, is the ideal location for your project that you want to pursue, or how did you go about assessing?
I think that's a question for her. I'm the engineer, project manager, and she's the developer.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Vicki Donkin within AI Capital, and I was contacted by the owners of the property a couple of years ago, asking me to market it as a commercial property. And I told them, in my opinion, I do the leasing at the Vaughan Center down the street, that it, my recommendation would be, since it is immediately adjacent to industrial park, the only thing that would go there is another gas station or another fast food. And that with the 13 acres, and I just felt the highest and best reuse, in my opinion, would be industrial. Excuse me. I contacted Sophie and Keith and talked to them about this, as to whether or not this would be appropriate for the city, given the demand that we have now currently for industrial-type properties. And with that conversation, I went back to the owners and said, "I think it would behoove you to go through the request for a zoning change that, you know, this could be..." And it's not going to be built as a spec building. It would be an owner-user, it would be a build-to-suit, and that's when, as staff indicated, we'd come back with a project plan and a site plan.
So, was there another option as, as relates to another location to have your project? Was it, I don't know, I'm asking.
Well, we don't have a project. We had a use as to whether or not a commercial use would go there. And as I mentioned, probably another gas station or another fast food. But then you have the remaining 10 acres, and what do you do with that?
Well, if this project was, was not approved in this current state, what would you do?
We would probably advise the property owners to sell it.
There's no other option aside from that?
From my 27 years of experience with just retail, I would say not retail. Maybe medical, maybe another use, but not retail.
There's a reason why I asked this question, because when I saw the staff recommendation, I looked at the, the comment above number one, it really got my attention. So I asked for some information regarding the thought of that, so I'm somewhat perplexed. But I really appreciate the petition, and I, I would like to be forward-thinking and not think in terms that, because one of the things that we do, we give everybody the respect and the fairness that they deserve. But from my perspective, I'm always looking for what is in demand from the citizens of the City of Victorville, and who can produce or come up and satisfy that demand. And I'm also looking for things that, that's profitable to the City of Victorville, as well as our population, and moving forward, and...
Well, Sophie is here, maybe, Sophie, could you make a comment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think the perspective or the comment I would add specifically relative to this site and possible changing of zoning to industrial use is, when we had an RDA, we invested heavily in the industrial development of Foxborough Industrial Park, purchased almost 80 acres of land, divided and actually sold off most of it. And there is a primary landowner in that area. We haven't seen a lot of activity from that landowner. We don't have an RDA to do any kind of incentives for development there. And to have someone approach the city and try to market this particular site as industrial does not seem to go against the continued development of the industrial park. We have seen and receive regular inquiries for buildings in the 100,000 and even smaller, and my understanding is this could be subdivided to possibly more than one user. So we definitely have seen over the last two, three, even four years, demand in this size and even a little bit smaller. And testimony to that is what's happening. When Sterling builds out in, at SCLA, they are definitely getting their buildings occupied. We, as economic development, receive those, receive inquiries from companies, and while we love to see development at SCLA, any development that will bring jobs and continue industry and, and all that comes with people working where they live, we wouldn't have any reason to oppose a change like this.
And thank you for your testimony. I yield back to the chair.
Thank you. So with that, I'll, I'll, I'll close the public hearing and then bring it back to the commission for...
If there are no questions from the other planning commissioners, I'll make a motion, and let's see. May I move to adopt resolution P 17005 recommending city council approval of the general plan amendment, portion of case PLN 1600022, and adopt resolution number P 17-006 recommending city council approval of the zone change portion of case, of the same case, and recommend city council adopt the negative declaration pursuant to section 15074 of the California Environmental Quality Act.
You have a motion and a second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter, a second by Commissioner Huber, to approve, recommend this to city council for approval, this project to include the general plan amendment and the zone change. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So that will pass on to city council for approval with Commissioner Dew in opposition. Thank you.
Agenda item number three, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Agenda item number three is case number PLN 17-00002. It's a site plan with an environmental exemption to allow for a long-term temporary vehicle processing and storage facility at Southern California Logistics Airport. The current site is just west of the existing Dr. Pepper Snapple bottling plant, and currently the site is in operation via temporary use permit approved administratively. The reason this is being brought before the planning commission is because the applicant has proposed for the land use to extend beyond the 90 days the staff has permitted to approve the use as a temporary use. As proposed, essentially the functions on-site are the reception of vehicles on tractor-trailers on-site. They are then reviewed and started to make sure they run correctly, they're not leaking any oil or anything, and then they're parked. These are the Volkswagen vehicles that have been recalled due to emissions issues. Once there, the staff on-site, whether it be evening staff or day staff, does regular rounds to verify the vehicles aren't creating any environmental hazard, and they also do paperwork and receive other vehicles throughout the day. The operation will operate 24 hours a day and seven days a week. However, all tractor-trailer loading and unloading is done off-site. It is conditioned for site access to be taken from innovation away to avoid any potential impacts to Edlona Road, as well, off-street parking is required to be provided for, for employees on-site. It's unclear at this point when or how all the vehicles will be removed, however, they will definitely be removed on or before January 1st, 2020, as conditioned. It kind of depends on, on the plans that Volkswagen has, what they do with those vehicles moving forward. As of this current writing, the approximately 40-acre site is almost at its capacity. It's at about 6,400 of the 7,000 spaces that are available to it, so they have reached out to staff for the potential for expansion on the area to the north. There are conditions provided, in the conditions of approval, that would allow staff to approve an administrative allowance for an expansion of the site. It should be noted that the entire site has been cleared and graded. There is no sensitive habitat as reviewed by biological survey submitted by the applicant. There are no permanent improvements, improve, no permanent improvements proposed at this, this time, and that's a good thing because it will not affect the site's highest and best use in the future. Additionally, any future permanent development that would seek to be located on-site could still go through the process, and because the sunset date for this approval is January 1st of 2020, it would not impede future development if we were to get a permanent user on-site that could utilize the site and build permanent buildings. That being said, the applicant is agreement with all the conditions as proposed, and staff recommends approval as conditioned.
I have a question, is, was, are there cars on there now?
Yes, there is.
Was the biological and environment consultants out there before the cars were there?
That's correct, that's correct. Before...
The land was completely bare when they were there.
Yeah, there was an EIR for the entire site that reviewed it and they cleared and graded it, and before staff approved any temporary use, we required a biological survey to make sure there was no owls or squirrels or any transient animals that might have moved on to site, and it was completely cleared before we gave the green light for them to move out on the site.
Them breeding owls and the tortoise, they've kind of disappeared in our area, haven't they? Most likely, I mean, 50 acres.
A lot of the acres, at the airport, there are a lot of those, and that was kind of what scared us at first, because there are tortoises on certain parts of the airport. But the site came back clear, and there's fencing up to prevent them from moving on to site as well, so there shouldn't be any issues with any sensitive habitat or species.
I have one quick question, and this might be more, more for the applicant, but you made mention about, you know, since it is just raw land, the fluids and oils, you know, with thousands and thousands of cars, is there any, would we have any concern of dripping oil and, and ground contamination from these? I know you made mention that they do inspections and things like that.
I, I could defer to the applicant on that, I know he's here, but he was, he informed me that part of their inspections is to make sure they're not leaking oil, they're not having any issues that would cause contamination into the ground.
I think you can speak for that. And any more questions for Alec? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing then. Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
James Purim, Extreme Logistics. What we do when we get the cars on-site, they're unloaded inside our facility, they're inspected and parked, and within 30 days, we have a mandatory inspection, again, of each car. It's started, we drive it, we look for any leakage anywhere, any fluids at all, we check the tires, and repark it again in a different spot. The cars are, in between those 30 days, our employees will go around, and I have, we have one person that goes around and specifically looks for anything, any kind of leakage, any flat tires, other, other things, but we're looking specifically for anything that would lend us to believe that we have an issue with that car, and if we do find something, the car is immediately shipped out. So, so far, we've shipped out about four cars that we, we found on the initial inspection when they were dropped off originally, and they're taken out to another yard that they deal with them there. We're not doing any maintenance other than just turning the cars on, making sure the batteries are charged, and that's it. We're not doing any maintenance other than just turning the cars on, making sure the batteries are charged, and that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I did notice there's a condition number one anyways that says at the end it will be returned back to its original condition. That would include any environmental, I would guess, right? Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'll close the public, is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Chairman, find the project category exempt per sequel section 1530 for E minor alteration to land, minor temporary use and adopt resolution number P 17-007 approving site plan case number PLN 17-0002 subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Commissioner Du. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved.
Agenda item number four, staff.
Thank you, Chairman Kurth. Item number four is case DEV 1611. It is a continuance request for a proposed municipal code amendment to revise standards associated with wireless communication facilities located within public right-of-way and on private property. This would occur citywide. Staff recently was approached by a developer that has proposed to put tall monopoles within the right-of-way. And so they are somewhat, have some allowances through state and federal guidelines to locate those within right-of-way. So we're working with the city attorney to try to adopt some guidelines for those before that proposal comes before you, if it ever does come before you. But we want to be ahead of the curve and bring these before you. But we're still vetting the requirements at this time. And we should hopefully have it to you by the April 12th hearing. So staff's recommending a continuance to that time.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing on agenda item four. Is there anyone else to speak to us on four? If you know one, I'll close the public hearing and I'll make a motion to continue this item to our April 12, 2017 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Kurth, a second by Commissioner Huber to continue this item to the April 12 regular meeting of the planning commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be continued to April 12.
Thank you. Agenda item number five.
Item number five is case DEV 16-6. It's proposed second continuance of a general plan amendment to modify the street cross-sections within the circulation element with a proposed negative declaration. Staff's been working with the building industry to try to come to a mutual understanding on the new cross-sections. Brian Gingler and myself are scheduled for another meeting with them this coming Monday. So we're hoping to have it all wrapped up to you about the April 12th hearing. But we do need a continuance at this point.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, question, go ahead.
What concerns do they have, BIA?
Well, to be frank, you know, these cross-sections to meet engineering standards are going to require additional right-of-way. And anytime you require additional right-of-way, that impacts the development potential of that site because you're taking away square footage of the private property that could develop. But the building industry is aware that we need to do these modifications to meet state requirements of complete streets that include bicycle lanes. It's just a matter of, you know, whether it's five feet or six feet for a bike lane. Those type of things that we're still, we're working with them on. So we hope to have that to you. We hope to be in agreeance with the building industry. But if not, we're going to, you know, provide both sides to you at the hearing so you can make that recommendation to the planning commission, whatever it is. City council.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That was a good question. And in general, I mean, what exactly is a street cross-sections? I know our circulation element has a lot of streets outlined. Is this an addition of new streets or is this reworking the plan because of bike lanes and things like that?
Yeah, so it's reworking the street width, in a sense. The cross-section, we call it a cross-section because it's kind of a slice of the street so you can kind of see how wide the street is and how many lanes are...
Looking at the street as if you cut a piece of cake and you're looking at it from the side.
Yeah.
Streets crossing each other.
Yeah, so currently, we have cross-sections for collectors, arterials, super arterial. And so we're modifying those widths to comply with the state guidelines and hopefully, you know, help beautify the city at the same time.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to us on number five? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the, no, actually, I'll go ahead and make the motion to continue this item to our April 12, 2017 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Kurth, a second by Vice Chair Porter to continue this item to the April 12 regular meeting of the planning commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that will continue to April 12.
Thank you. In compliance with the Brown Act, it's necessary for us to make available time to members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within our subject matter jurisdiction. Is there anyone here to speak to the commission tonight? Seeing no one, we will move on to item number six. Mr. Portret.
Yeah, I'll handle that for Chris. So item number six is a new business item where we're seeking some feedback from the planning commission on reader or message boards. In this case, we did, we have a request from Midway Home Solutions that's located at 14444 at Star Drive, within a 10-acre shopping center. They're requesting a digital reader board that would face, have freeway orientation. Currently, our code only allows for reader boards such as this to be on shopping centers over 50 acres inside, 50 acres in size. So to do, to do this, we wouldn't be able to issue them a permit over the counter. I mean, we'd have to modify the code. There's, we want to be a variance allowed for this. So if we modified the code, we have the potential of more requests. And I just did a quick analysis. So if we were to allow this code change to go forward so we'd allow reader boards, not for just 50-acre sites, but down to 10 acres in size. Currently, we have shopping centers like Costco, Toys R Us Hobby Lobby area and the Viarta that are somewhat adjacent to the freeway that could potentially request these. And that's what's currently built. As we continue to build out northerly and southerly along the 15 freeway, we could potentially have more requests like this. Some history on these reader boards. They've evolved over the last 10 years. When they first started being presented, I think they're becoming more affordable for developers to install these type of digital displays. But we've had, we've had concerns about, just from the aesthetics, also the glare that's produced from them. The flashing of changing copy creates some traffic concerns. And also, it's hard for the city to regulate the content. Our code requires you to have only onsite advertisement of that business. But when they're allowed to change copy, it's easy for them to advertise something that's off-site. And it's harder for the city to regulate it because they can easily change it in and out. So over the past 10-plus years, the city has somewhat restricted these to only, at this current state, to these large shopping centers like the mall would qualify for this signage. Dunya Plaza is over 50 acres. We have the Auto Park, which has a digital display right now. So that's how our current code is structured, to just limit these type of signage to larger shopping centers that are exposed to the freeway. But we wanted to bring this before you to see if the planning commission had a different take on it. If they would like us to pursue this as a code amendment, we would take your direction.
I would like to see what other cities on the freeway are doing. I, I have mixed motions here. I think a 10-acre site, which there wouldn't be a lot of them. Beesable for something like that, but I'd like to see what other cities are doing.
Question, would you like that in the form of a code amendment as well? So you could have a presentation of other cities and also the ability to act on a code amendment to recommend to the city council? Or do you want us to just come back to you with some analysis and then you could give further feedback?
I would like some analysis with...
Okay.
Feedback.
Yeah, I'm not personally prepared to say, let's go ahead and do a draft, you know, draft resolution or ordinance or something like that.
Agreed.
Because there's a lot, there's, you know...
Yeah, we can, we can bring that back at the April hearing and give you feedback. And then if you need additional information, we can provide that at a later date as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to comment. Originally, when the code was written for 50 acres, I think there was a lot of thought that was given that it could be a smaller acreage, 10, 15, 20, whatever. I see going lower than 50 from the original rationale in having 50 acres. I think it could be problematic in going down to 10. Being clustered and... Not Las Vegas. I'll just close with that.
Thank you. It was mentioned in here, Midway Home Solutions has been talking about this. Is there anyone here from Midway that, I didn't know if they came here to speak or anything? Because I was just curious, you know, if, what was the reasoning? And I know it's roughly about the same size as they have, obviously, it's digital.
I believe so. One of the statements that the owner presented to me was that, you know, the city's losing out on sales tax. So I'm assuming he thinks that by having this digital display, it's going to increase sales at his facility.
Taking a look at what other cities are doing, I know... I don't know, but I remember one of the big ones. Time, you know, things change. I remember, like the Walgreens or something, they were just flashing.
All right, we'll get you that information. Thank you.
Number seven, school facilities needs analysis. Okay, that's it. Any final comments? I'll start with Vice Chair Porter.
No, not at this time.
Mr. Huber?
Yes, I want to comment, staff, on working with the car wash and helping get that approved. I'm really against under-parking. I've just seen the community, the big buildings, that there's no parking. I mean, everybody wants to eliminate parking so they can get more square footage. But I think this project, and they've built enough of them to, they must give that a thought also. I mean, if I was building a big shopping center like that, or a car wash, I would sure give that in consideration, losing business. But it's their problem and losing business, the customer can go somewhere else. So I appreciate staff working with the customer and doing, on the applicant, doing that.
Commissioner Du?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Women's Day. As I think in all of us having a mother, I have a strong appreciation of women and I think it's appropriate that we celebrate women. Secondly, I would state, as relates to the workshop for the Old Town Victorville, I think things are progressing well. I also like to acknowledge the fact that the city, it's my view that the city of Victorville could ill afford to neglect any portion of the city of Victorville. And I recognize that there are some who think that we would like to change Old Town into something, I don't know. But someone made a remark to me that we're not looking for Old Town to become Beverly Hills. Neither are we. But at the same time, Old Town cannot, is, cannot be ignored. And I appreciate the effort of the city council and the planning commission putting forth every effort to improve Old Town and giving the benefit and the credit to individuals who live there to give their value input. It is deeply appreciated. And I, I did, you know, my eyebrow goes up when I'm upset. So someone seemed to be berating the staff. And that's when Mr. Volcher has stepped in. And I think when we pursue something, I recognize people have, are very anxious. They have their emotions involved. But I find it no need to berate staff members when they're only presenting what's in the best interest of the city of Victorville and our communities. I thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks. And I agree, too. Those off-site workshops are a lot more work for you guys to put together and the presentation materials, knowing there's going to be a lot of, you know, general public there. And I appreciate what you guys did at the last meeting with all the explanation of all the materials and, you know, all the maps on the table for public access to really help everybody out. So thanks. That meeting adjourned.